This special meeting of the Legislative Policy Development Committee. Welcome, everybody. The sole purpose of today's meeting is actually to go over the legislative proposals for the 2023 legislative session. So Laura has brought in all of her colleagues that are that pertain to the various items that were on the list. Before we jump into that, I know I do want to acknowledge Karen, you had sent an email in advance noting some areas that I think would be good for us to be able to weave into the conversation. Karen, I know that you're not going to be able to be here for us, here with us for the entirety. Do you want to say anything first before we open things up to, before I turn things over to Laura?
One, I just want to acknowledge all of the work of the team. So it's not in any way to, I see the value of everything that was put in front of us. So thank you for that. Two, I wanted to try to connect the conversations that we've been having at the board with what we create as a legislative proposal. So I want to raise the issue. And three, I want to acknowledge that timing wise, it may not, it may not be relevant for this session that we're going into and we may have missed the opportunity to dig too deeply into crafting of legislative proposals around the three things that I raised. But if there is something that we can think about, because staff has already been bubbling up, working on it, I'd be interested in that. So my three areas were the teacher shortage and was there anything around the work that the talent office is raising or anybody else that requires legislative change that we'd want to think about around the teacher pipeline, ed prep programs, teacher certification, anything in that bucket? The second was we in this committee have spent a lot of time on racial imbalance. Was there anything bubbling up there that required legislative change that we wanted to think about? Acknowledge that's a big, these are all big ones. So they're not things that I think you slip on a legislative agenda at the last minute without going vetting, acknowledging that. And then the third was on the funding front, recognizing that the SIR funding cliff will be upon us in, I believe, 2025. Were there things we needed to be doing now so that, so that we, so that we're more prepared and not trying to do it all in one session, you know, in advance of 2025? So those were the three things that bubbled up for me. But in general, it's just making sure that the stuff that the board seems to be focused on relates in some way to what we bring forth as legislative proposals. And I apologize for not being able to be on so for too long, but I did want to raise those.
Yeah. And Malia, if I may, sure. Thank you for bringing all of those up. They're all important. A couple of things I can report back to you. The first on the teacher shortage. So last legislative session, or gosh, it might have been the session before, we were tasked with doing an evaluation of the regs and the statutes. And so we have the 144 pages of certification regulations that are very outdated. And then we have the statutes that every year since I've been here, we've passed something having to do with certification that then supersedes what's in the regulations. And so we are working with an outside group right now to develop that crosswalk. And I think it's imperative that we have that before we can have that larger conversation about what other changes need to be made or can we make in statute. The report is due January 1st. And so I think I am meeting with the commissioner and talent office folks within the next couple of weeks because we do have a draft of that report, I believe, from the group that we had been working with. And so I think once we have that, it's something that we can bring to the committee level possibly, and we can have some discussions about possible fixes for next year.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then in terms of the funding cliff, I know I have some things to say and then I don't know, Kathy may want to add, but I think you guys are already aware, because I believe Ajit has done a brief presentation, that we are in partnership with UConn and other higher ed institutions on the COVID, on the Connecticut COVID Education Research Collaborative. And they are doing just that. They are evaluating all sorts of different things that happened during the pandemic to try and isolate best practices that we can then advocate for funding resources, whatever we need, to focus on those things that we know worked well during the pandemic. So that's ongoing work that the department's doing.
Yeah. And in addition to that, I have just created an advisory group of the school business officials that where we're going to meet monthly and discuss, you know, which things they are funding that are really ongoing operational costs and they're utilizing the COVID relief funds to do that. You know, what happens when, which is going to vary significantly because for some districts, they didn't get a ton of money. And so it's not going to have that kind of an impact. We're going to find it, the greatest impact will be among the districts that got the largest amounts of money to the extent that they have incorporated that, those funds into ongoing general operational costs. But that is the work that we are doing is to, in anticipation of the legislature and OPM asking exactly that question, which is, you know, where will the gaps be? And then, you know, aligning those gaps with the research work that Ajit's group is doing to see if, one, there's just some operational things that we're going to need to speak to the General Assembly and the Governor's Office about from a budgetary perspective. And two, are there, you know, best practices that it would make sense for us to consider dedicating resources to post the pandemic funds going away? So we have begun that work. And my conversations with OPM in terms of how to accommodate that from the budget perspective is they would be looking for the bulk of that information for the midterm year. So not right now. And frankly, we're not prepared right now to give them a sense of what that would look like. So it would be one session from now. So you're, Chairwoman, you are a little ahead.
No, that makes great sense. And midterm, I know we can always look, I know midterm is mostly focused on funding issues. I wasn't sure if something like certification or if that could be handled at the midterm. My understanding of the policy related things more happen at the biennium. So that makes a lot of sense to me on the finance side of it. Thank you. And I don't expect a solution on my third of racial imbalance, because I recognize how big that is. And that we as a committee, you know, aren't necessarily even clear. We're doing a ton of work on pushing the districts that are not in compliance. But, you know, we haven't really kicked around any, any solutions. I raise that just to keep it sort of on our radar, but don't expect that you've got a proposal ready, ready for the session.
Yeah, definitely. And we appreciate you elevating it. And I was talking to Mike just before this, and I think it probably makes sense if this is something the committee really wants to focus on, for us to actually dedicate a couple of meetings to only that and figure out who we need to bring in that would be helpful for the discussion so we can look at what that policy shift might end up looking like and actually get some words on paper.
Great. I think that's a great recommendation to the, to the group to really get us to move forward on, on that, on those items. Sorry, Karen, I didn't mean to jump into you at my exuberance of the good idea.
No, no, no. Madam Chair, your meeting, go right ahead. I've taken up enough of your time.
No, I appreciate very much. And you, especially the racial imbalance piece, I was also thinking as I was reading the proposals in advance of this meeting. So with that, I think Laura, I'll turn it over to you. And just by way of process, we don't need a, any sort of proposal to, to be raised in order to go into the discussion. We'll just do a proposal to, around whether or not we are all in agreement of putting forward these proposals once Laura has gone through the, the description of them all and we've had discussion. So with that, Laura, over to you.
Thank you so much. And so I hope all of you did have a chance to look over the proposals. I am going to take a few moments to do a overall of what is in the proposal, a summary. And then I have, as you can see, invited some of my colleagues here with me who can answer questions if it gets, if it gets too far in the weeds and I can't, I can't answer them. So we will start, and I hope you noticed that the, the titles had 2023, then a one, and then the title, 2023, two, and then the title. So I will take them up in that order. So the first one is an act concerning revisions to the Alliance District statutes with, which Kathy Dempsey helped me with. This proposal fixes several changes made to the Alliance District statute during the most recent legislative session that had unintended consequences for the department and the grantees. It allows for the automatic recalculation of Alliance Districts every five years. So we don't have to keep going back to the legislature to ask them to allow us to recalculate it again every five years. And it's going to cap that number of Alliance Districts at 33. So as you probably know, the ones who have been on the board for a while, we originally had only 30 Alliance Districts. But five years ago, when we did the first recalculation, legislators did not want to exit from the program. And so they decided that instead of allowing districts to kind of graduate and get out of Alliance District status, they were going to make it 33 Alliance Districts. So then this, in that last session, we ran into the exact same thing again, and they made it 36 Alliance Districts. And so we are saying no more. We do not want to just add three more Alliance Districts every single year. That's not how we should be operating this program. It waters down the supports that we can give to the districts that need it the most, quite frankly. And so this will limit that. Let's see. This also is going to allow, right. So the next thing it does is, this is part of the, the issue they were having, was if a district graduates from the program, that portion, what they get is their Alliance District grant, which is a portion of their ECS. It's anything that they receive in ECS funding from 2012, any increase they have to now is what gets pulled out as their Alliance District grant. And instead of going to the municipality, like the rest of the ECS does, it goes directly to the communities. And they're held harmless from the legislative phase in and phase out that's currently happening with the, with the ECS funding, that 10-year phase out that started under Malloy. And so they will be held harmless from that. So what we're saying in this proposal is that now any district that's ever been designated an Alliance District, whether you are currently or not, you will still, for the purposes of an ECS calculation, be considered an Alliance District for only that purpose. And so they will still have a portion of that grant, whether they're an Alliance District or not, that gets sent directly to the district instead of the municipality. Kathy, I think that is it. Is there anything else that you'd like to add? I think that's all the proposal does.
Yeah, there's one other little piece, which is that last year, the legislature changed the lookback period for the three new Alliance Districts.
Right.
So while the other 33, the base year, when we do the calculation is 2012, for the new Alliance Districts, the base year is 2022, which meant that a couple, two of the three districts ended up with either less money or no funding because of that, which obviously wasn't the purpose of the Alliance District program. So the last thing that it does is make the base year 2012 for all 36 of them. But otherwise, Laura, nice job.
Thank you. I've been practicing.
I was trying to find my own mute button. I just want, do you want to have folks, I think it probably, it makes sense to have folks be able to ask questions if there are any. So any questions from committee members around this particular proposal? I found myself getting a little bit like twisted around in it a bit. I think you did a good job and I just want to make sure that I understand, I understand, right? So the capping at 33, then with, with how those are calculated, I feel like I'm going to ask like the dumbest question on the planet, so my apologies. But so what is, I guess, what's that sort of break line that allows one to be in the Alliance District or not in, I mean, in Alliance, be categorized as one as opposed to not? Is it possible that somebody, you know, that two sort of switch places in any given, you know, recalculations? So it's like all of a sudden you're out. You didn't necessarily do anything that, you know, your outcomes may not be better, but somebody else's outcomes might be worse. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense. And yes, that's right. Because they're, we're, we're calculating the lowest now 33, well, 36 now, we hope to go back to 33, the lowest performing districts. And so we're using that overall performance score to decide which are the lowest 33. And then you're right, they do, the ones that are on the edges do, that can, you see them going in and out.
Okay. Can you, go ahead.
And an interesting thing about this is, is that because of the, what the legislature did this year, it's actually not the lowest 36 districts.
Oh, that's true.
So in an effort to keep the three new districts as Alliance Districts, which are not part of the lowest 36 any longer, actually, I think some of them improved so significantly that they, you know, had jumped up like 10 places. So it's really, right now, it's the lowest 33 on the accountability index. Ajit does the calculation for us. And this, for the next five years, plus the three that we're no longer going to be a part of it. But it can absolutely happen that the districts, every five years, some small subset could move within and without, which is why really from a policy standpoint, makes a lot of sense to hold them harmless with the ECS. Because we're acknowledging that the, that dedicated resource to the district is part of what hopefully helped improve those outcomes. So we'll continue to make that dedicated resource available to them to support the work that they were doing. And to the extent that there is every five years, any fluctuation in and out, it's not going to change, you know, we're not going to take away money, give you money. You will essentially have that same kind of safety net moving forward in perpetuity. So if you're ever an Alliance District, then the financial safety net will remain, which I think was key for most of the legislators and the reason that they were having so much anxiety about this district's moving in and out of that status.
Yeah, the perfect example would be Norwalk. So Bob Duff, the Majority Leader of the Senate, Norwalk was going to be removed from the program, which meant because they are on the, the phase out on the ECS side, they would have ended up losing, I think Kathy was million dollars or might have been a little bit more than that. But because they're an Alliance District, they get held harmless from having that money taken. And so for him, it actually was a, my district's going to lose a bunch of money. Most districts, it wouldn't be like that, but with his, it is, it would have been. But we've now solved for that problem as well.
I have a question coming back to that, but Volly, your hand is up.
Yeah, so you mentioned that for ECS districts or for ECS funding, the districts would still be viewed as Alliance Districts. Is that in perpetuity or is there a cutoff, like after five years, that'll no longer be true? Or is it just forever?
I think Kathy, it's where the way this is drafted, it would be in perpetuity, but only for the purpose of calculating ECS funding, for no other designation.
Right.
They wouldn't continue to get the same level of supports from the department, but they would continue the same funding.
Right. And it would also have the, the minimum budget requirement would remain in place for them, which is a protection. It's, that has been kind of messed around with multiple times in the last five or six years. But the minimum budget requirement essentially says that the community must budget at least what they budgeted for the district the prior year in the upcoming fiscal year. And particularly in our towns that are, and we really see it with our smaller, more financially distressed communities, you know, it, it does not allow them to reduce education funding and, you know, they have to maintain at least the commitment that they had in the prior year. It's not a perfect system, but it does provide some protection to the school district from seeing reductions at the same time as the, you know, they are showing that their performance is lagging.
Kind of a follow up, that's, so Volly just sort of asked the clarifying question that's allowing me to ask my next one, which is, I noticed that you had, in the proposal, also noted that the, that the fiscal impact for the state is a future one. I get that, I think, because of the fact that if you're going to continue, if we are going to continue to give the same level of funding in perpetuity eventually, how can, yeah, is that something that we can really sustain long-term if we have more, more districts coming into the program?
So because of the way, I know, and it's, it's confusing. When I say over time, to the extent that an Alliance District would have been one of those districts that was receiving a phase out of their ECS grant, they won't see that phase out. It does, to the extent that the Alliance District under the formula would continue to increase their amount till phase into full funding, that's still going to happen. So that doesn't, the only cost to, I shouldn't say only, the cost to the state is that differential if the Alliance District was going to be a phase out district. So we can tell pretty, it's something that we can do the calculation on between now and 2030, when that ceases to happen. And the amount of funding that would be impacted is probably less than 1% of ECS in total. So it is something that we can sustain. Yeah, it doesn't have the kind of impact that you might think.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from guests?
Yeah. For this and for each of them, it would help me if you could let us know where you anticipate opposition to what you're putting forward and where you anticipate support. So I think, I think I just heard that in the, that we'll get support from a few districts that would have lost money under the, under the other way.
Yep.
Is there anyone that's, that's going to come out against it? Like who's, who's going to oppose us besides, I mean, fiscal hawks who, you know, will think about that? I mean, is there, is there something else that would make somebody oppose us? And I don't want to take the real personal call, but just like from, from your best guess.
Yeah, Kathy, what were you going to say, Stratford?
Yeah, I think it'll be Stratford because, so Stratford and potentially Enfield, to the extent that our proposal includes the moving the base for all the Alliance Districts, the base year to 2012, that will mean that both Stratford and Enfield will have to increase their local contribution, yes, to the school districts. And that was part of the reason why that language was that, that one-year lookback period was put in was the, there was an enormous amount of anxiety over the fact that they had to make up the differential. We had offered a phase in, actually, frankly, last year. I forget the representative or senator that, from that area that we had been, yeah, that we had been working with and, you know, they just, they weren't interested. I mean, it's certainly a compromise that could be made, but those would be the two districts where I think we might potentially encounter some pushback. Other than that, I don't think so, right?
Yeah, I think the Kathy, by making it so for the purposes of ECS, they'll always be considered an Alliance District, is going to take care of the other towns that, or the other legislators that were opposed to it. So, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. All right. So moving on to the next.
Great. Thank you. Sharon Fuller is here to help me with this one, if you have any questions. This is an act concerning educator evaluation and support. I can tell you right off the bat, Karen, I did see your note in the chat. I believe we will get support from the teachers' unions and from CAPS for this proposal. They've said they believe it is moving in the right direction. I don't think they're going to think it goes far enough. And if you have more questions about that, we can get into that. But this is definitely, I've been told by all, something that is moving teacher evaluation in the right direction. And so with that said, so there are outdated statutes from 2012 that currently govern the requirements for education evaluation and support. And since that time, new and innovative strategies to support the continuous improvement of educator practice are emerging across the state. Some of these strategies reflect best practices in the field of education, but they don't align with what's in statute. So this approval or this proposal makes various changing, changes, including and probably most notably, it would allow you, the state board, to revise as necessary the guidelines for a model teacher evaluation and support program and the model teacher evaluation and support program itself. Instead of having, as you do now, I believe would have to go through a larger process than just being able to do it as a body. And Sharon, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add or if folks want to just jump in with questions?
Yeah, I can just add that that would be the highlight of this proposal is to give the state board the authority to make changes as needed.
Right.
And then, over the past recent years, if districts want to amend their plans, they had some really good ideas, but they don't currently align 100% with the statute. But if the board had that authority, we would have the opportunity to have the district explain their rationale and show how it aligns with best practices. So that's just an example.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions from the committee member, committee members? I appreciate.
I'm sorry. This aligns with the, I forget the task force, Paul.
Yes.
That's working on this, this issue broadly. This aligns with, with.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yes, just a quick update. We have an errands on that council, too. We've had some really great meetings recently, first to identify what the design principles are moving forward. We also spent some time looking at best practices from a couple of other states and also several districts in Connecticut and outlining which of the elements of those plans align with the design principles. Our next meeting is December 15th to really get down into the details of what that would look like in a Connecticut plan.
Great. Any other questions? This discussion has clarified and resolved questions I had as I read last night, so I appreciate that.
Good.
All right. Hearing, or not seeing any hands raised? Let's go on to the third.
Okay, the third one. This one is very technical. It's probably the most technical one that we have. This is an act concerning a citation correction in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. And so in statute, the model language of the Interstate Compact contains a citation error in two places, citing sections instead of chapters of the United States Code. So this is, it's a Scrivener's error and it's in the section of the compact that controls the scope and coverage for National Guard Reserve members on active duty. And so the, the sections 1209 and 1211 do not relate to National Guard and Reserve active duty status. So the provisions renders the group of students who would have been intended to be eligible for coverage effectively not covered by the compact. And so all this does is change those two words and it fixes the error.
Any questions? On to four.
That was the easiest one. And now I have Robin here, because the next five are from the School Choice Office. So Robin's probably going to have to help me out with these. The first one is an act extending the dates for magnet enrollment standards. So this proposal basically extends three dates in statute. It continues the period that the reduced isolation and residency enrollment requirements for inter-district magnet schools will apply from June 30th of 2023 to each fiscal year thereafter. And this remains consistent with the settlement agreement in the Chef v. O'Neill case and the policy for enrollment requirements outside of the Chef region. The proposal also extends the period that inter-district magnet schools must meet residency and reduced isolation standards set by the commissioner beyond the existing end period of July 1 of 2023, and also extends it to every school year thereafter. Lastly, Lastly, the proposal extends the period that interdistrict magnet schools must meet residency and reduced isolation standards set by the commissioner to qualify for the magnet operating grant beyond, again, the end date of June 30th, 2023 to every fiscal year thereafter. So I think, again, this is us not having to go back to the legislature year after year after year to have to ask for the same extension over and over again.
Great. Any questions from folks? All right, not seeing any.
All right. I'm doing just such a good job explaining them. There's no questions. Okay, the next one is an act concerning interdistrict magnet school funding to repeal an applicable funding structure. So this proposal repeals provisions that provided a unique funding structure for one school, Thomas Edison Magnet School, based on the enrollment numbers from Meriden. This was a special piece that was put in by a legislator that was serving the town of Meriden at the time. The magnet school that was operated by Aces relocated to Waterbury as a new magnet school in 2021 under the name of Aces at Chase. So this statutory language is no longer applicable because it requires that the school began operations in July 1 of 2001. And so we're just cleaning it up from the books.
And there isn't any reason why Chase needs any additional language that serves them. I'm just making sure that we're moving it all together. There's not some unintended consequence here.
Robin?
I'll address, they are seeking new legislation. We did support legislation that they added last year because the regular RESC grant legislation requires that they have less than 55% enrollment from a single town. And because this change that really was a forced change because they no longer had a building, we supported that legislation. That was a one-year amendment. They're seeking another year for that amendment, but they're going to drive that legislation. They've done a new operations plan. We're treating it as a new school. It really doesn't apply. There, that was based upon less than 55% or 55% to 80% from Meriden. Now we're dealing with Waterbury students. It's a completely different construct. So they understand that they, that this new legislation or the existing legislation that applies to all RESTS in the non-Chef region applies to them. And like I said, they're going to seek this one-time amendment for themselves because they did go over that 55%. Now their job is to manage that going forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members? Okay, moving along.
All right. The next one is an act concerning reduced isolation setting standards for interdistrict magnet schools. So currently in statute, the commissioner has the authority to develop reduced isolation standards for interdistrict magnet schools for the purposes of enrollment requirements on or before July 1 of 2017 and to develop all an alternative reduced isolation student enrollment percentage for interdistrict magnet schools located in the Chef region on or before May 1 of 2018. So what this proposal seeks to do is update the language to authorize the commissioner to update the reduced isolation standards as necessary to comply with applicable stipulated agreements in the Chef v. O'Neill case and legal considerations in the non-Chef region.
I have questions, but are there questions from members?
I have a quick question. Sorry for the background noise. I was hoping you could define what exactly reduced isolation like means, like what exactly is this statute addressing?
Sure. So in the commissioner's standard, so the statute itself, 10-264L, says that schools, magnet schools have to meet the residency requirements and then the reduced isolation standards set by the commissioner. So then in the commissioner's standards, those define what a reduced isolation student is. And the goal is to reduce isolation to meet the applicable standard. Right now, that standard says the school should enroll less, at least 25% of its total school enrollment with students who identify as various, you know, racial and ethnic categories. And though in terms of the reduced isolation identification, a reduced isolation student is a student that identifies as any racial ethnic category other than Black and Hispanic. And that's because in the regions where we're trying to reduce isolation, that happens to be, those students of color happen to be the highest student population. So introducing students into the magnet school who identify otherwise reduces their isolation.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members? So I don't think that I know, I think I probably have less of a of a question and just wanted to note that that this is the, this particular proposal is what raised questions in my mind last night as I was reading this about the work we we should choose, you know, we choose to do going forward as a committee around around this issue and racial racial imbalance issue. And so I think I just want to note that, you know, should we move forward and having those sort of concerted, you know, a couple of meetings of really wrestling through, you know, what might be some language or potential, you know, movement forward. I like things to make sense. And and right now, there's, you know, sort of these piecemeal things that happen because of legislation. If if there is some way in our conversations to be cognizant of all of the different pieces or places that we are sort of in in one way or another, addressing the sort of racial imbalance, isolation issues that it would be great if they're, in my opinion, if we could think about some sort of rationale that sort of ties some of these together and makes something more coherent for the state of Connecticut. So more my two cents and less of a question. Before we move on to the next, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think in prepping for what I hope to be, you know, maybe a series of meetings on this topic, we can huddle together over here and see if we can pull together all the applicable statutes, get them all in front of you guys in one place. And also, again, determine whether or not there's other people that we need to bring to the table to have the conversation and to really have the conversation instead of just talking about it up here to get really down on the ground and have it.
That sounds great. I appreciate that work on that.
Okay. So we have just two left here. The proposal seven is an act extending limits on local boards of education in the Chef region from charging magnet school tuition. So that's, that's basically the proposal. It extends the period prohibiting local boards of education that operate interdistrict magnet schools in the Chef region from charging tuition for students enrolled in the school programs, with the exception of Hartford Public Schools, which may charge tuitions for students attending Great Path Academy.
Questions from anyone?
Yeah, I do. So that means, explain that again for me.
Robin, you might want to take a stab at explaining it in a better way because that's the only way I know how to explain it.
So it's just to, the context will make it make sense. So in the magnet statutes, 10-264L, the operating grant in the Chef region is a little different than in the non-Chef region. So schools that are operated by RESTS in our, in the Chef region, Cracker and Goodwin is considered a REST for these purposes. They are, they receive an operating grant equal to $10,652 per pupil, whether they're from Glastonbury, Hartford, Ava, wherever. Local boards of education that operate magnet schools in the Chef region receive a different operating grant. It's a different structure. So that includes Bloomfield, East Hartford and Hartford. They, for their schools, they receive $0 for students in districts. So Hartford doesn't receive any operating grant in terms of the magnet grant. For their Hartford students, East Hartford doesn't receive anything. For their students, same for Bloomfield. But for their out-of-district students or any district, out-of-district student that's enrolled in the school, they receive a higher amount than the RESTS. So they receive $13,315 per pupil. So because of that, while the RESTS and Goodwin University can charge tuition to the sending towns, those local boards of education who also receive ECS funding for their students, they are not allowed, they're prohibited from charging tuition. So that statute has always been in place. The one exception is Great Path because that operates as a REST. It's it's a Manchester Community College school and Hartford operates it as a contractor. So it's not its own school. So that is, that's a little different. And they receive for all students participating in that or enrolled in that school, the $10,652,000 like the RESTS.
Okay. I got a chew on that a little bit. But go ahead. Thank you.
And any other questions from folks? Don, is there something that you'd like to discuss further to feel more comfortable as we move forward on the proposal?
No, I got to do my own little research. Let me, I need to go back and talk to some people, so. I'm not, I'm not happy with that, but that's okay.
Well, I want to make sure because at the end of this, we're going to basically move, ask to move forward all of these proposals. So.
To go to the full board.
Yeah, yeah. So if we need to hold this one back, then I want to just identify that.
No.
No? Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions from folks? All right, then moving to the last, is that where we are?
Yes, moving to the last. Proposal number eight is an act concerning the funding of grants for choice programs with funds appropriated for the Chef settlement. So what this proposal is looking to do is to authorize the commissioner to make grant payments to voluntary interdistrict school choice programs that assist the state in meeting its obligation under Chef v. O'Neill. Currently, there is authority to issue these academic and support grants for magnet schools in open choice, but not for other choice options. And so the technical high schools recently became part of the the system. And what this language would do is it would provide us the authority to give those same grants for the purposes of meeting the requirements of the comprehensive school plan in Chef. So they're basically incentive grants that we give to the other participants that take the students that we can't give to the technical high schools as the statute is currently written.
Questions from folks? Okay, not hearing anything and not seeing any hands. That brings us through all of the proposals. Thank you so much, Laura, and all team members for the work you've done on this. So we are at a point then to, do we need like a formal proposal or or in order to move them forward?
Just a vote of the board to move these forward to the full board's December meeting.
Okay. All right. So a sort of the impromptu motion is that the LPDC agrees that this, that this bunch of proposals can move forward to the State Board of Ed meeting in December. Can I have?
Go move.
Go move.
Second, first and second? Great, thank you. All those in favor, do we want to go around? Or just say aye? How about we just?
Aye. Aye.
All right, I'm going to ask everybody to raise hands. How about we do that in a visual way? So all those in favor, raise your hand. Martha, are you, you have, sorry, see now I can't find a good way because people's, people are cut off.
Well, Bonnie is, yeah, Bonnie is not on the camera.
I'm, 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 I'm an aye, yay.
You can use the raise hand symbol.
Thank you.
She's driving.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go through. We have, we have a Bonia is an aye, Malia is an aye. I'm going to go around my my screen. Karen, are you still with us? I don't think she is. No. Don, you had said aye, correct?
Correct.
Martha's hand was raised. And and I think that's all of our our formal voting members on the board that are here, which is enough to have the motion passed and move forward with bringing it to the board.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, everybody. I hope you have a great rest of your day. Thank you so much for being able to come together at a relative last minute. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.